Well, in the spirit of taking over Chuck's spot, I thought, "I'm gonna dress up tonight." So I put on my good shirt and my Christmas tie. But as soon as my wife sees it, she says, "Dave, that's not your Christmas tie. It's a New Year's Eve tie." So I looked at it, and I see, "Oh darn it, she's right again." It's got all these things you use, like for when you put the curly hat on. So I've got a New Year's Eve tie, sorry. Content was good. All right. So, does anyone have any comments on the agenda? Anything we need to add?
I move we accept the agenda.
I'll second.
A motion made by Sean, second by Amy, to approve the agenda as it stands. So the first item is our 10-year Street Utility Capital Improvement Plan. I believe Chris is going to...
I can take that, Dave.
You're gonna take it?
Yep.
Okay. You're looking out, geez. Have at it, Glenn.
At the December 7th meeting, we presented the 10-year Capital Improvement Plan, excuse me, which consisted of three years with no construction. 2016, 17, and 18 with no construction. Four years of total utility construction, which would include Bain Street, and then three years on the northeast side of town. And then three years with mill and overlays. The mill and overlays, we have not targeted specific streets. We know areas where we would be looking at the streets and doing a road assessment for those, but we do not right now have a specific street targeted for any specific year. But that's the 10-year plan. So, staff recommends that the city council conduct the scheduled public hearing. Following the public hearing, the council, we asked, would consider adopting the 2015 Capital Improvement 10-Year CIP Plan.
Thanks, Glenn. I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting, open up the public hearing.
Excuse me, you don't have to close that.
That's right.
You don't have to close anything, but you can just open up the public hearing here at 7:03.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
You don't have to have a motion to open the hearing.
Oh, thank you.
You can just open the hearing, but we have to close it.
All right, first mistake. First one up, and I make a mistake, sorry, people. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to come forward and speak to this issue? If you do, please step to the podium and state your name and address. See no one coming forward? So I'd like for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jenna, second by Amy, to close the public hearing. Any comments on what Glenn had to say? Any questions on the part of the council, staff? Hearing none? I'll make a motion to adopt the Capital Improvement Plan. We're doing a...
You need to take a vote on the closing of the hearing. You had a motion and a second.
Second mistake. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, public hearing is closed.
Now you're ready for the hearing.
Now we can talk about the Capital Improvement Plan, if anybody has comments.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Capital Improvement Plan.
I'll second.
Motion made by Amy, second by Sean, to adopt the Capital Improvement Plan. Item number two, resolution accepting work on City Hall Landscape Improvements with D&amp;J Landscape. I think that's yours, Mike?
Yes, I need to make sure that you take a vote on the motion in the second to accept the CIP. We'll get there.
All in favor of motion on number one, Capital Improvement Plan, signify by saying aye.
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 No, opposed, none. Capital Improvement Plan is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Resolution accepting work on City Hall Landscape Improvements. Mike, you were...
We'll have Glenn cover that one with Chris. Okay.
I'll cover that. Here, members of the city, oh, sorry. Mayor, members of the city council, before you, for your consideration is accepting project for the City Hall Landscaping Improvements. This is the D&amp;J Landscaping Contract. This was all part of the 2013 Street and Utility Improvement Project, where, if you recall, the City Hall parking lots were done under that project, and landscaping was done as a separate contract with that project, all part of that public improvements project. The project was awarded on July 15th of 2013. The original contract was, the contract bid amount was $22,623.00. There was one change order during the project for $960. The final contract came in under the revised contract amount. It totaled $23,571.00. Just if you recall, there were some trees and shrubs that were planted in 2013, but most of the work actually took place in 2014, when the plant material was placed. In 2015, there was some material moved and replaced, and actually, we had a kind of an interesting growing season, if you kind of observed it. Everything looked like plants on hormones. It was just things grew wild with all the rain and a number of other factors. I think a number of us were stumped on how well things grew. Anyway, in this coming spring, we are expecting D&amp;J Landscape is going to move some material, work with staff to move a few things. But in essence, the contract is complete. We're ready to close it and close out the contract. Right now, the city is currently holding 4.9% of the contract in retainage and a few items that he done this spring that he hadn't yet been paid for. That totals $1,157.42. As required by the contract, we have received IC-134s, which is basically the Minnesota withholding affidavit, and then lien waivers and consent of surety. So at this time, we are ready to recommend acceptance of the project and to close it out. With landscape contracts, this one actually has only a one-year warranty, unlike our construction, which is typically two-year. So in essence, that would also begin tonight as well. So it would terminate a year from now, in 2016. So with that, I guess I'm entertaining any questions, but recommending approval of the resolution for acceptance, accepting work.
I'll make a motion, then, to approve the resolution accepting the work by D&amp;J Landscaping.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bruchek, second by Jerick, to accept the resolution accepting work and authorize final payment to D&amp;J Landscaping. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, passes 4-0. Next one, I think, is also you, Chris. Authorization to submit through Highway 19 Main Street project for an STP grant.
Yep. Surface Transportation Program. Again, before you is the report. I'm not gonna get into the details. The first section just outlines the background and the history that has developed with the project. Again, we're looking at a, currently what's planned in the, for MINDOT and in the city's capital improvements plan, is a project to reconstruct Main Street through downtown in 2020. Again, we outline here kind of the history to date, the contact with the DOT, et cetera. The most recent meeting was one on November 25th, where staff met with MINDOT officials to basically plan responsibilities for both the DOT and the city in terms of who would do what for a project that is proposed to be led by the city for that reconstruction project. It would be done as a, what would they call, a cooperative agreement, cooperative agreement project, again, where the city would lead, but basically in partnership with the DOT. What's before you for your consideration is District 7, as well as actually throughout MINDOT, throughout the state, but we call it ATP 7. So MINDOT District 7, which is the Mankato District, is allotted a certain amount of federal funding that they can utilize. Actually, it's available for the local agencies, counties or cities, depending on the program, to apply for during projects where MINDOT is going to do improvements. And in this case, this was actually recommended initially by the DOT this past summer, that we consider an application for the STP, Small Cities, Small Urban Cities, City Streets Program, for funding in 2020, when the project would take place. This is federal money that complements what the state would use for their funding on the project. And typically, this would fund what we call, it has to be eligible costs, but it has to be costs that would be eligible costs on the trunk highway. And typically, here, we're probably looking at landscaping, streetscaping improvements, maybe enhanced, some of the enhanced lighting costs that would be a requirement for the city to cover, that some of this funding would help cover that. It's items that the DOT cannot pay for, but are, again, are part of the trunk highway project and would complement the project. Right now, the MINDOT District 7 is anticipating there'll be $1.5 million available in 2020 to be applied for through this grant program. If successful, basically, the federal grant will cover 80%. The city has a 20% obligation to match those funds. And so I did list here that in some preliminary numbers, we are probably looking at city-eligible costs of somewhere in that magnitude. So we applied for the total, or proposing to apply for the total $1.5 million, which would require about a $375,000 match. As we get closer to 2020, we'll have a lot better cost estimates. We'll have a better understanding of what those expenditures or expenses would be. And that application may get revised as we get closer. But at this point, we're early on in the stage. We know preliminarily, we're in the ballpark of the funding that would be available. And at this point, the only competition would be any other cities, and there's seven in District 7, that are eligible to apply for this funding. Five of the seven have already, are already on the STP list for previous, for other years, for 2015, 16, 17, 18, and 19. So I believe, you know, not knowing what the competition is, I believe that we have a, you know, a good shot at some type of grant opportunity here. So I guess with that, again, the attached is the, it's generally relatively simple and short form. They've been attached to your agenda report. That's in the format that they require. And we're looking to submit that here tomorrow or the next day to District 7. It's due in January, and so that we can get it, I guess, on the list for consideration. And it is actually, there's actually a board or committee of basically city engineers, my peers from District 7, some county engineers that review and decide which projects will get priority. So, again, there'll be a lot of consideration, given that the fact that the city hasn't had a grant opportunity like this in recent past, and this is the type of project these things are focused on. So with that, I guess, if I can entertain any questions.
When do we, when will we find out if we receive the grant?
It'll be this, I'm not quite sure how quick, but it'll be early in 2016. So we'll find out if we're on the list, and they should have an idea on an amount that they're looking to reserve for our project.
Chris, this applies to anything that's through highway, state? Does it matter if it's state roadway or federal roadway?
It's, well, this would be specifically for the Main Street project, because it is a project that has federal funding. The MINDOT itself may have federal money on the project as well. And again, it would cover any cost that the city would be obligated to cover that the DOT could not pay for. And it's probably gonna be things like parking, additional parking, and again, mostly probably landscape and streetscape enhancements.
City utility costs are not eligible.
Correct.
Chris, it's one, up to 1.5? So if there is competitor or competition for the grant, it's up to 1.5?
Yeah, and I can say that in the previous four years, I think there's one year where there's two cities that are sharing the funds. Otherwise, it's been one city per year. And really, MINDOT has a little bit of control on the years and focus on the project. So I, again, in our discussion with district staff, I just, I guess I feel positive about it.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we approve the STP grant application.
I'll second.
Motion made by Sean, second by Amy, to approve the STP project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the approval passes 4-0. Number four, municipal state aid system. Chris, you're on that one too, I believe.
Well, I'm gonna, we went through a very similar presentation in January, so at the beginning of this year, but obviously Jenny knew on the council. So I'll kind of give an overview of, again, the municipal state aid system. It's also a good reminder for everybody, and hopefully, if there's somebody, you know, some of the public listening on can hear this as well. So go through this briefly. We want to talk about the municipal state aid street system. We'll use the term MSA or MSAS on a lot of occasions. And this is the funding that the city actually receives from the Highway Users Fund, or the gas tax, vehicle taxes that are paid into the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund. So the purpose of the state aid system, I'm gonna read this right directly, is, again, is to provide resources from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund to assist local governments with the construction, maintenance of community interest highways and streets on the state aid system. Highways and streets of the community interest are those highways and streets that function as an integral part of the network to provide more than just only local access. Again, we're a kind of a central, or a city where we attract people from other places that obviously need to get around. That's more than just the residents. So state aid funds are the funds that are collected by the state according to the constitutional law and distributed from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund, and they're apportioned among the counties and cities, and that's cities over 5,000 population. New Prague joined the MSA system in 2003. And again, these are funds that then are used by the counties and cities to aid in the construction, improvement, and maintenance of the municipal state aid streets. The municipal state aid streets, if you look, view the map, there are all the streets that are highlighted in pink. These are, as they currently exist, in 2015. We made some revisions this year, and I'll briefly go over those. Most of them are existing streets. There's some area in the west side that are incomplete, but they complete a network. To qualify as a state aid street, they have to begin and terminate on either another state aid street, a trunk highway, or county road system. And it's really to be kind of our minor collector system. Again, serving more than just local access. The way the Highway Users Tax Distribution is distributed, in actually 2015, these were the final numbers, there was about $1.98 billion that was, and this is Minnesota transportation funding. Again, vehicle taxes, gas tax is the primary, et cetera. And they're distributed as such. 62% goes to the state to fund trunk highway systems, 29% to fund the county state aid highway system. And again, we have county state aid highways here in town. La Sura County has First Avenue Southeast, and then we have County Road 37, or Seventh Avenue, and then Columbus that pass through town. Those are the county state aid highways in town. And then 9% is distributed to the MSA cities, the ones over 5,000, again, which New Prague is a member of that. As noted here, there's 140 MSA cities. The one thing that's a little bit frustrating sometimes for us city engineers is that, what's nice is more cities get an opportunity to get into the system, but what happens is the piece of pie gets cut up smaller and smaller, or the pie does. And so as the system grows, we still add more cities to the system. As noted, in 2015, 166 million got distributed to the MSA cities, the cities over 5,000 population. From that, every city turns in a report annually to help determine how the funds will be distributed. And there's a set of rules and formulas that the city engineers have developed over the years to try to be fair and have a fair way to apportion those funds. And so it's distributed, part of it is distributed by population, just evenly by population, and the other is distributed by what they call needs. And it's basically looking at, right now, it's determined by what is the traffic volumes on any given road that we define as our state aid roads. And that's how basically it's calculated. As I note here, 20%, basically what we take is what our total mileage within the community. We can take 20% of that miles, and then we can define or designate that mileage as state aid. And so we're picking roads now that are higher volume roads, the ones that are our minor collectors that connect, again, to our more major roads. I'll talk really briefly about county road turnback, just more of a thought for the future, and I'll show you it on the maps here. This is the map from 2010. This was the state aid system as of the end of last year, in 2014. There were two areas, as I show here, the northerly section of First Avenue Northwest and Fifth Avenue Southwest, that we actually revoked or removed, and we relocated that mileage over on the east side of town, over here on Seventh, and Third Street Southeast and Chalapski, higher volume roads. The reason the mileage was designated over on the other spots was the system of rules changed about two years ago, and it used to be more on what needed to be done on a road, rather than what it was the volume of traffic. Well, over the years, there's been discussion by the city engineers to change the rules and make it a little more easy to deal with and logical to deal with. And we're in a transition period of going from what we called the need to construct, what was needed to bring that road, specific road, to a certain standard versus what is just the volume of traffic that those roads are serving. So now, the needs or the distribution of money will be based more on volume than anything else. So that's the main reason we made that transfer last year to the east side of town, because that's a higher volume on those roads. I mentioned briefly about county road turnbacks, the natural progression, nothing's proposed at this time. There's only been discussion in recent years with Scott County and La Sura County to do what they call a county road turnback, where we're talking about La Sura County, this stretch of First Avenue Southeast, where that would actually get turned back to the city and actually be added to the city's MSA or state aid system. Scott County has had similar discussions, again, for Columbus and for County Road 37, again, that those would fall then under the city's jurisdiction. When that happens, typically, those roads get improved before the city would take them over. It adds to the formula, it adds to the revenue that the city can get, et cetera. And this is something that we'll certainly be talking about sometime in the future. I would imagine sooner than later. How the distribution of funding appears for New Prague, this is the 2015 numbers that the city received in January. 289, just under $290,000 was apportioned to New Prague. 25% goes directly to the city, paid out every year for maintenance, again, $72,000 and change. 75% actually gets set aside in what they call a construction account, or construction fund account, that we can only draw on when we do projects. 2015, we did First Avenue, I'm sorry, Sixth Avenue Northwest, and we were able to draw on those funds to help fund a portion of those improvements. Prior to that, the last project was in 2012. That was the Second Street north of City Hall that used that funding. Estimated allocation in 2016 is about $295,000. And I show that our estimated fund balance in 2016 will actually be a negative $277,000. And I'll hit on this a little bit last year, and I'll show you what that all means. The key thing is, is we have been taking advantage of a nice system that state aid has, where we can actually get advanced funding. We did it in 2012, we did it again this year, where they actually, not every city's using their funds every year, so there's money sitting in this city allocated account that cities can draw on. Well, if the money's sitting there and not every city's using it, they're allowing cities to advance. So it's basically like a no-interest loan. So, not to get into the details here, this is probably more for your interest later, but this is just to show our current fund balance, again, projected for 2016 after we receive, the city receives its allocation. Again, we're looking at just under $277,000 negative. It's because we've advanced, and as we get our annual allotment, it'll go back to pay that advance. This is a kind of a conservative projection, but we've showed a 2% annual increase in funding. And the reason I show that as 2% is the system does grow, because there's growth in population, more people are driving, more people are buying fuel. Inevitably, that fund will grow. But with that, more cities are added to this mix, the pie gets cut smaller, and so the amount that cities start to see each year, we're not expecting it to grow much. We've seen historically, again, you see up in 2013, 14, 15, we've seen 4%, 6% annually. We don't feel that that's going to continue, because more economic cars, electric cars, and less the gas tax or funding increases in transportation, we're not expecting to see this grow. Again, construction costs are increasing 5%, 10% per year. For us, just to keep at, on an even keel, we should be seeing this growth greater than 2% or 3%. If you recall, I mentioned in January, there's gonna be a lot of discussions on transportation funding, and how does that impact New Prague? Well, this is a direct example of how that can impact the city. I did show on the second, a second slide, if we saw just a 5% annual increase in funding in that, funding state aid funds, the difference in the next 10 years is about a half a million dollars. We would go from, I'm projecting, again, with the projects that are in the capital improvements plan, that we expect to use state aid funding for, that in 10 years, with those advances, et cetera, that we'd be looking at about $112,000 in the whole, if we only have 2% increase per year, without, if there isn't any increase in state funding like gas tax... Without, if there isn't any increase in state funding like gas taxes, et cetera, that fund won't not continue to grow as we would hope. If we have five percent increase in funding, I'm showing that it's... The difference is almost a half a million dollars more in revenue that the city of New Prague would see with increased state funding. So that's, again, shows you how that impact would be a positive impact for the city if funding, transportation funding increased. Again, that would inevitably be a savings in the general levy on projects in the future and things like that. So that's all I have. Hopefully, that was not too overwhelming. But this is really the state aid system and how it functions for the city. And I always like to remind... We talk about state aid, but this is the city's funding. MnDOT's role is only to be kind of an overseer of how the funds are spent and what projects they're used on and that they're used on projects that meet standards that have been established. But it is managed... The system's managed by the city engineers. And again, it's only provided oversight by the DOT.
Chris, looking at this schedule that you have up now, it appears, though, that we can draw from that even if we already have a negative balance to draw upon future funds.
Yeah, what we actually did this year, we actually still had a negative balance. We just took another advanced and the negative balance went further down. Then again, will continue to be paid back. And as you can see, by 2018, we're back in the black. What's actually interesting, not to get and make it more complicated, but they actually have what they call a low balance incentive when they calculate what we call the need and how the money is just distributed. If cities are using their funds and actually have a negative balance, they're shown to have a greater need and actually get a little bit more money than the city that actually has got a big balance because they're showing that they don't need it. And they actually adjust some funds. It's not a great amount, but it adds up, so.
We should stay in the red.
That's how this account should be used. And there's a lot of cities and city engineers that don't get it, but that's how it should be used. It's just a place to move the money in and out and plan for the funding, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? I'll make a motion to approve the proposal by SEH to allow them to go ahead with this study or this process.
Second it.
Seconded by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, passes four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Approval of property rent lease agreement with Tom Mossberg at 411 Fifth Avenue Northwest. Mike?
I'll take that, thank you. Including your packet is a proposed property rental lease agreement with Thomas Mossberg at 411 Fifth Avenue Northwest. The prior renter is his partner, Mr. Tom Cahoot, a trucking associate. Tom, looks like he's getting out of the business. And so he's asked that his partner kind of take over the rental agreement with the city. We have a proposal for 2016, 2017, two years, at 525 and 550 a month. They... The tenant takes care of all of the utilities. The only thing we do is we mow around the perimeter... Or, excuse me, we snowplow around the perimeter and they take care of all of the close shoveling. And then they take care of the mowing or glennin or do we stop when we go around? There's just that one little piece out by the highway. But I think they take care of their own mowing. And then we really have no major maintenance responsibilities that we wrote the lease to begin with, is that if there was anything major there, that we decided whether we participated or not. We have not had any to date. So it's been a good relationship so far with these gentlemen already. It's used as a storage facility for semi trucks and/or two trailers. Otherwise, no other outside storage of products or anything. And so we're recommending approval of the two-year rental agreement with Mr. Mossberg. Property taxes, just, I think, a question came the last time we had it. Property taxes on this are about $1,800 is all. So it's a tin building, has no real insulation. If you've ever been in the building, we were last in it kind of when we started the rental program, where it was rented to Gen X. There's no real major insulation. They take care of the utilities. So it's not an ideal building. If and when we get done renting it at some point, we'll probably just recommend tearing it down. It works for them and it's close, it's in town, and economically feasible.
It's a shelter for their trucks, basically. That's all it is. Any questions on this or comments? No. Accept a motion for approval of a two-year rental agreement with Tom Mossberg.
So moved.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. Motion is approved. Excuse me. Item number seven, or six, rather. Adoption of ordinance authorizing conveying of real property owned by the city to Brinkhouse, Cromie, Connolly, and Landmark. Ken?
Yes, I'll take this. If you recall, at the last council meeting on December 7th, we had an introduction of the ordinance that would deed properties, if you want to look at the overhead, basically splitting this fourteen-and-a-half-foot strip of land, which is just to the west of First Avenue Southeast, south of Third Street Southeast and north of Fourth Street Southeast. And we had basically the four southerly property owners, three are along First Avenue and one along Fourth there, the Brinkhouse property. So those have indicated that they're... Whoops, excuse me. Interested in the property here. Basically, Brinkhouse, Cromie, Connolly, and Landmark. We have two property owners on the north end here that have, still at this point, not indicated any interest in the property. After this process, I will obviously notify them again that your neighbors have acquired property at no cost. And we'd be willing to run through an ordinance for them at that time. It's not a costly endeavor by any means. But we'd like to get this ordinance approved tonight to deed that land to these four property owners, as indicated in the ordinance. And that'll wrap up this process and get the title in their names. So I know the property owners that have expressed interest are glad to see the process wrapped up. It's taken a good part of the year to kind of work through the details on and off during different things that have come up for this area. But I recommend approving the ordinance to get this done tonight.
So if it's approved, they would have title to it by January 1?
Probably a good question for Scott. Any reason why this wouldn't be able to be wrapped up by the end of the year? I don't believe there'd be anything holding it back.
I can't think of a reason. If we can get it published on the ordinance, the deeds are basically prepared. I was going to run those by you tomorrow. And we should be able to do that by the end of the year. Yep.
It doesn't matter to me, obviously, but I was thinking it'd be a nice present for the first of the year to those people.
It just requires us to get the ordinance in and the...
Yeah, we'll have it in. Won't be a problem.
Any questions, comments, part of the staff or council? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing conveyance of real property. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to do it by roll call. So Nikolai is not present. I will vote for it.
David, we probably need a motion and a second first.
Sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jenna, seconded by Sean to approve the ordinance resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Posed, hearing none. And roll call is Mayor Nikolai is not here. Bruszek, yes? Jerick?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
And Tuma?
Aye.
That's four unanimous for all those present. Thanks, Mike. Okay, now number seven. Consider approval of lease... Copier lease documents with Metro Sales.
I'll take that. That, in closing, your packet is information on the proposed new five-year lease on copiers for City Hall, Police Department, and the utilities. Our current five-year lease is expiring here at the end of February. It originally was with Icon and GE Capital Leasing, and it expires the end of February of this next year. December 2013, Metro Sales out of Mankato bought out the former territory covered by Icon, and they've had the copier lease with the city ever since that acquisition. We've worked with them, trying to see if there's ways to help reduce our copying costs. And what we're taking a look at is entering into a new five-year, 60-month lease for the purchase of four new copiers. The purchase of that to acquire and use similar copy machines, similar to what we presently have, by going to that would see our monthly rental payments decrease from a little over $1,200 to right around $960, or savings of just under $250 a month, or almost just under $3,000 a year on the capital equipment side. On the maintenance side, we've been at 30,000 copies. We're reducing that to 24. The black color copy cost at .0097 will remain the same. However, in the color copies, we're seeing a reduction from .0810 to .0691. And in addition to that, we were also able to extract or lock in the maintenance rate for five years. We'd go to color copies being set to a single click versus normal 11 by 17. They count that as a double click. Color will only be based on what we've actually used versus a fixed amount. And then finally, we're going to be able to review this on an annualized basis every year to make sure if our copy needs change, that we can reduce the maintenance copy contract versus what was in the previous five-year agreement. So we've been able to make those changes. Those changes on the maintenance side would save us just right around $130 a month. So combined, the aggregated savings, I believe, is about $4,500 a year on the rental of the machines and the maintenance contract. And so if you multiply that times five, you can see the savings over the next five years that this will produce.
Nice job.
Well, it's always nice to bring some budget savings to you in the process and that we could have seen a change that if we make the change with our council packets, obviously, our copying costs, getting rid of these packets to you will substantially change. So that's why we wanted to make sure that we could have at least an annual opener to retake a look at what our copy volumes are so that we're not locked in for five years. But collectively upgrade the equipment, reduce the costs, and generate some savings.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Jenna.
Mike, can we add the golf course?
Golf course is on the same rates as far as the copying costs. Yep. Throughout the city, we're on the same black rate.
So they don't need another machine? Or there was discussion once about...
No, we couldn't get the... The machine cost is what it is until the end of the lease. So that's why we're going to new machines. But I tried to make sure that on the maintenance cost, that we are consistent throughout all of our machines. I think we have four other machines between golf, electric department, wastewater. There's one more somewhere, street department, that we've got that rate throughout the city. So we've got as good a rate as I can get that way.
Was the golf course on a different rate before? Or were they always the same rate?
They're on... When we made those recent changes from what we did five years ago with this, we've brought all of them to that same black and white rate.
I just heard a discussion. I thought this might be a good opportunity.
Any other comment, questions? I'll accept a motion to move forward on the new lease agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Amy, to approve the new lease agreement with US Bank and Metro Sales. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, none, passes four zip. Next one. Resolution adopting 2016 city budget and capital improvement plan. Guess this one's yours.
Following various budget workshops that were held from August through November, staff is presenting the 2016 all-funds budget, which includes the general fund, the enterprise fund, special revenue funds, the capital projects fund, and the debt service funds. That total $20,290,000. Along with the budget is the 2016 through 2025 capital projects plan. Staff is recommending that the council and mayor review and approve the resolution adopting the 2016 total budget for all funds and the proposed 2016 through '25 capital
Thanks, Patty. Short and sweet.
In your packet is the summary on the capital improvement plan. This is the actual size that you saw all of the individual detail when we brought that through. But we didn't think you necessarily wanted another complete copy of it. So we just provided a summary as part of the final budget adoption. But we will post the budget adoption and the CIP plan on our website.
Okay. This resolution adopts both the city budget and the capital improvement plan. I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Sean. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed, hearing none, passes four to zero. Next one is a resolution adopting the 2015 property tax levy collectible in 2016. Patty, you going to take that in?
I'll take it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure she was awake tonight. Including your packet, if you recall, going back to September, you established the preliminary property tax levy for 2016. You conducted a review of the various departmental budgets, including the general fund, debt service, the special projects fund, and included the tax abatement for the charred projects, as well as including the general fund is the allocation for the golf. And in front of you is the total 2015 property tax levy collectible in 2016. It is the same as what we started with back in September. You've got the general fund, the tax abatement, the debt service, and the EDA levy for a total of $3.882 million. That levy is up approximately $57,356, or 1.5% in 2016. There's a summary sheet that shows you historically what it has been here in recent years, as well as a brief explanation that the general fund levy, which is up about $43,500, primarily covering the increased cost to cover a new investigator position in the police department, as well as the golf course. No change in the special projects fund. Slight change in debt service on the annual principal and interest payments on our debt for the street utility reconstruction projects, the fire ambulance station and Phillips Square Apartments at just under $14,000. No change in the EDA levy for, again, a total change of $57,356 or 1.5%.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the 2015 property tax levy.
I'll make a motion to do that. Second.
Motion made by Jenna, seconded by Amy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Posed. Motion passes four to zero.
Those two actions conclude the budget process for 2015. We'll now give you a six-month reprieve until we start next July again.
Next on the agenda is the Compensation Plan Health Insurance Program for 2016. This was all covered in the budget, but we are going to cover this separately, too. Mike, can you explain that?
Yeah, just real briefly, that as I indicated in my memo to you, you've adopted, or not adopted, but you've budgeted for an adjustment of two and a half percent in the proposed 2016 budget. Also coupled with that... Also coupled with that is the city's health insurance for 2016. Again, for the second successive year, we're looking at a two and a half percent reduction in our health insurance costs, with no other changes to the proposed cost-sharing percent, the VIBA contribution or the deductibles. Those major changes occurred in '11, '12, '13, and '14, and so council moved it to the point that it is today, and there are no other proposed changes, because we put those in broad parameters, including it in the budget, because I've got union negotiations and other things still yet to come with the Police Department Union. It's appropriate that the council just confirm and take action to adopt the Compensation Plan changes and the health insurance rates for 2016.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Compensation Plan and Health Insurance Rates for 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Sean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, passes four zero. Next on the agenda is the proposed 2016 Official City Fee Schedule. Mike?
I'll actually take that, Dave.
Ken? Okay, thank you.
As we do at the last meeting every year in December, we take a look at our official fee schedule for fees for the coming year. This obviously would be for 2016. We'd look to have these fees be effective January 1, 2016, and remain in effect until amended. All the fees are listed on the attached fee schedule. They're broken down by department and/or type of fee. Any fee that's proposed to change from the current 2015 fee schedule in 2016 are highlighted in yellow. Really, the majority of the changes are really related to the Electric Department, related to specific rates, and Bruce kind of covered a bit of that during the Electric Department Budget Presentation at the last meeting, and the workshop prior to the council meeting. And also related to, again, deposits related to residential electric, water, sanitary, as well as some commercial deposits as well. So those are just specified more directly than they had been in the fee schedule previously. So those are really the bulk of the changes. I think the only other real change we had in there was a minimum of a dollar for interest, or excuse me, a service charge on past due and delinquent non-utility bill invoices. That's on the first page of the fee schedule. And the only other fee that changed is on the third pa, or fourth page, excuse me, no, fifth page, relating to the street seal coating fee. Some question came up about that, and that is specifically if a developer were to install infrastructure for a new roadway, we haven't had that for a few years, but you never know, we might have some new roads go in. What we actually do at the time, they plot the property and as a developer's agreement added into, they actually pay for the first seal coating on that roadway. And we base it on that year's construction, or the previous year's seal coating contract that the city actually would have done. And so right now, the dollar amount proposed is actually from 2015. We feel the best way to approach this is, once the new quotes come in, in the springtime, we'll probably amend the fee schedule with that current fee at that time, probably keep a little more current with that, rather than do it at the end of the year, so that we're up to date with, with that cost. So we'll probably see a change. I don't know, what will that be, maybe?
Usually around May. We advertise for bids in April, get them in May, so we know what the prices would be about the first part of May.
That's really the only other change, so if any, any other questions or concerns about any fees that are not proposed to be changed, I think we've got everybody here tonight to answer any questions, should there be any, so.
Go ahead, Amy. My question was, is there a reason why the golf fees aren't included in this? On the packet, the fees, would it be appropriate to put them in the fees?
That question.
I've never had the question before.
A lot of ti, a lot of times, that most, most of the, a number of these fees are established by ordinance at various parts of it, and it basically then directs that those fees be adopted by, by resolution. Probably one we can review, I just haven't had that, that golf course operations aren't addressed in the, in the ordinance book in any particular area that I can recall right offhand. Have never been in there, and just really probably haven't given that any thought, but probably a question that we can take a look at.
Just green fees, all the fees that they char, that they said each year. It would be nice to have them all in the fees manual, since it's under the title of the city, oops, excuse me.
We, by the way.
Me?
A couple, well, I just, on the utility billing for the water, I know we've had discussions before, and I don't know if this goes along with when we're reviewing the ordinance or not. The charges, is it per meter or per unit? We always have that discussion, so I just wanted to, for clarification here.
Say that one more time.
Well, the utility billing rates for the water rates, and it looks according to the schedule, it's per meter, the billing cycle amount. I just want to clarify that that is correct. I know before, we had discussion determining between meter and unit.
Charges are per meter. Thousand gallon.
Hearing none. I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution adopting the official 2016 fee schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Amy, to approve the official 2016 fee schedule. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, resolution passed. In front of you, you have now a Charter Commission recommendation, and I think Mike or-
I'm going to do a little bit of background, then I'll let Scott go into the detail, but Charter Commission held their annual meeting for 2015 on Thursday, December 3. The only major item of business they had was discussion and determination on whether they wanted to consider and/or recommend to the council a proposed ordinance that would add a new Section 7 dot 1.3 to Chapter 7 of the charter, dealing with the authority for expenditures. Scott worked this with the city of Faribault that ultimately adopted this, and so what I'm going to do is let him talk a little bit about their rationale, and ultimately, the Charter Commission, after review and discussion with the city attorney, is recommending to you that you consider the adoption of this language, which would then require us to create a policy to, to deal with some public expenditures. But the action ultimately tonight, at the conclusion of Scott's clarification and answering any questions, is for you to call a public hearing, which would be held on January 19. We're required to have certain amount of notice and publication on that public hearing piece, and so you would have a consideration of holding that public hearing and introduction of the ordinance on January 19. But tonight's meeting is just calling the hearing, but I'll let Scott go through some of the background and the purpose of what he's recommended.
Go ahead, Scott.
Thanks, Mike. I'm here in council. This is, the language you have before you is a product of, of a number of reasons that other cities have gone through. Mike's correct, one in particular, Faribault, had a number of questions raised regarding how city was expending dollars, do they have public authority or public purpose authority to do that, things along those lines. After talking with the city's auditor, other folks, other cities out there, we came up with language that's almost exactly word for word what you have before you as well, that both the Charter Commission there and the city council wanted to insert into their charter and are doing that. The language itself, I'll jump around a little bit, but the language itself, basically in the first paragraph, touches on what is the public purpose expenditure standard that the courts have established. So this provision does two things for the city. One, it says, yeah, we follow that, and two, it says the council's got to come up with a policy that says it's following that standard, and to say what's covered in that. Now, there's other examples that are in the second paragraph, which address some of the things that this city council, you folks dealt with earlier this year. Faribault dealt with a number of these as well. Had a long discussion with the state auditor's office. They did review the expenditures that Faribault was making, made a suggestion that why don't you have this in your charter if you're a charter city, and show that you are substantiating and fulfilling a public purpose expenditure. Council liked that, Charter Commission liked it, they went forward, they have adopted this, it's in process, it's now being added to the city's charter. You folks earlier this year had a same conversation on various expenditures as well. That's up to the council if you want to approve them or not. That, that's what you folks do. What this language does is it clarifies what we really have in Chapter 7, which doesn't say the city council will approve this, that, or the other expenditure. It says the council controls the financial affairs of the city. What this new section would do, would add to that and say, and by the way, it's got to fulfill public purpose expenditures, which is the standard the state auditor uses, it's what the courts have established, and then you folks would have to come up with language that says these things fall into that, and you as five council members would decide whether or not it's, it fits or not. The reality is, we can find as staff, as city attorney, many times areas you can point to and say, this supports whatever expenditure you want to make. That's not true for every expenditure you want to make. But even the auditor has acknowledged, state auditor's office has acknowledged, the council has broad discretion if they've established policies and they say, this is why this satisfies an expenditure for this city. You don't have to add anything, but this just shows you are following it and, and meeting that standard as well. So if that's why the recommendation was made to do this, we did discuss, as Mike said, with the Charter Commission. Charter Commission was in favor of it, thought it made a lot of sense. I think it makes sense as well. I think charters in many cases are, while they're a broad document for what the council can and can't do, it does say we're supposed to put in place ordinances, policies, things like that, to make sure you are following the, or have the correct authority to do certain things. This covers the expenditure area, I think, pretty well. The process that the commission recommended was to adopt this by ordinance, which would require five votes of the council to adopt. It is what the Charter Commission and the council used to re-adopt the charter back in November of last year, which was effective in February this year. It's cheapest way of doing it. If the council doesn't want to go forward with that, arguably, you're required to hold the public hearing. There'd be two readings of the ordinance. If you approve it, it would become effective 90 days later unless it's challenged, which you have the exact language in the memorandum and in the ordinance bill that shows what has to happen during that process. If you don't, Charter Commission can say, put it on for a vote. I don't think that's the way you want to do this. I think it's better if the council's, is in favor of the language. If not, then you certainly can go back to the Charter Commission and say, well, we don't like this part of it, and, and have that discussion with the commission. But it's, this is the language, and this is what the Charter Commission recommended.
Anyone have questions for Mike or Scott?
I do. Okay, so just to clarify, I'll just take one, for example, where was it? Employee recognition. So per state auditor, it's they, say you cannot do it unless you have a policy.
Yep.
So if we adopt this, we still have to write a policy.
Exactly, yeah.
So there's still, that's the next step.
You still have to do it, and that's why I'm saying, this isn't creating anything other than stating what the standard is, and then the council would take the step, and Mike has asked me already, do we have sample policies or things? Yeah, you can have a very detailed policy, and I think that's what you need to have. But in, in talking and discussing this with Jeff Reed at the auditor's office, it was, look, if you've gone through and the council has taken steps to create that policy and point to why there's a belief it meets these three criteria, you're not going to have much challenge to that. So no, you do, it is required to make that policy, and that's what really is there, and that's what the Charter Commission understood as well. Yep.
John was at that meeting?
Yeah, I was at the meeting. It makes perfect sense. Again, we hadn't looked at the, before last summer, we hadn't looked at the charter for over 20 years, and, and the sun still came up every morning, but, you know, this just defines and outlines it even more. The Charter Commission was in, I think it was unanimous, that they thought that it should be added into, into the charter, and it's, the, you know, the policy's going to be reviewed annually anyways and can be changed by different councils and whatever else, so it still's going to be able to work with whoever's sitting up here. So I think it makes sense, and I'm in favor of it. I'll make the motion that we add it to the charter and call for the public hearing on January 19.
I think, Mike, all we need is a motion for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's all you're doing tonight. You're, you're not having a first read or anything. It was really to get it before you, to acknowledge the statute requires moving forward to a public hearing, then answer any questions if the council had any, at least initially, and then again at the public hearing, or if you wanted, either Mike or I to bring additional materials, whatever it may be that you want to see. I, I certainly can, I'm not sure what else that would be, but Amy asked the correct question. I mean, it really is, this puts in place the ability to come up with a policy, and then you five would decide what it should or should not be. That's what ultimately is there.
What is it, like, general timeline, once it's, once it becomes charter to have a policy? I mean, what do you recommend, then? How long?
Well, I, I think if, if it's going to move forward with the process, that Mike would already be bringing stuff to you to do that. We, the, the ordinance itself would not become effective until publication, the 90 days thereafter. So you really have three months to put that policy in place before this is there. Arguably, you could put the policy in place anyways. It doesn't, not having this in the charter doesn't, you know, prevent the council from doing that. Effectively, you already do it when you make those decisions on expenditures. This would just say, council's going to do it, and again, you have the three months to do it, basically.
Still need a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Amy, to call for a public hearing on January 19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, passes four to zero. Next issue is discussion on liquor compliance issue with Desperate Measures Karaoke Inc. Doing Business at JT Hideaway at 125 East Main. This is not something that we are going to be taking any votes on tonight, as I understand it. This is more of one to bring forth a public hearing. Am I right with Mike?
Yeah, the intent is to have some dialogue with the council to solicit some directions so that we can prepare a notice and a letter to the liquor establishment owner to address those elements that are noted in the memorandum tonight. And with your indulgence, I'll take a few minutes and just kind of go through a bit of the background. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at it with us tonight, and the audience is Terry Bylee and Jeff Jensen. I just drew a blank in, in trying to do that, who are the current owners of JT's Hideaway at 125 East Main Street. In your materials, what I tried to provide to is about a week and a half ago, I received notice as I was leaving City Hall on December 9, that we received an insurance cancellation, certificate of liability insurance for Desperate Measures Karaoke Inc., Doing Businesses, JT's Hideaway, that their liquor liability insurance had been canceled effective November 9. We received that notification, as I say in my materials to you, on December 9. I made attempts, because I was leaving the office, to contact the owner, Ms. Bylee, by personal phone, cellphone, both home and the office, and was unsuccessful. and was unsuccessful. And even though I wasn't able to get in touch with her, I reviewed the matter with the city attorney, knowing that one of the requirements to have a municipal liquor license is to ensure that the financial responsibilities align in our city code section 110 dot 17 and Minnesota statutes 348 dot 409, are compliance required. And as such, with certificate of insurance being canceled, effectively, the liquor license owner was not in a position to conduct business. To the best of our knowledge, at that point in time, we believe they had continued to operate during that time period, but didn't know for certain. And so, we, I had to initiate the creation of a letter to Ms. Beiley with Scott's assistance, that effectively suspended their license, their liquor license that day due to a lack of insurance. I was gone out of the city for the remainder of the day, and so I asked Police Chief Garice to deliver that notice, which he did. And subsequent to that, Ms. Beiley was able to, with her insurance company, put her insurance back into effect. And that can be seen on the materials that are included in your packet on pages four and/or five, that what was canceled effective November 9th was placed back in operation on December 9th through the end of the licensing period, which is 4/1 of 2016. But in doing such, and in taking a look at the fact that the insurance had been canceled for that period of 30 days, and the business continued to operate to the best of our knowledge at that point in time, it required me to take that action. When I returned on Monday of this past week, I tasked Police Chief Garice with doing an investigation into what technically is a liquor license violation, recognizing that the insurance was not in place and in effect for those 30 days. In doing so, Jim provided to my office then, on I believe it was Thursday of last week, the report that you have in your packet, taking a look at what occurred and talking through with the insurance agency and the entity associated there that Jim got in touch with. And then he also got in touch with Ms. Beiley to confirm with her is that she did, did in fact, operate her business during that 30-day period of time, as such as I indicated that that was a liquor violation. And reviewing that again further with the city attorney, the question is, is so where do we go? What do we have to do in light of the fact that this violation in its occurrence is technically the second liquor violation within a 36-month period of time from when the last one occurred? And as such, that puts into play, if you take a look at the materials at the back of the packet, on or about page 14, 15, is that if there are liquor violations, the council previously, a number of years ago, adopted an administrative process on how to address liquor violations. However, in adopting that, especially after the first one, which is a simple payment of $500, the second one does involve the, a fine and/or a suspension of the liquor license. And in taking a look at that with Scott, we were both of the opinion that that would be, in all likelihood, the minimum of any administrative actions that would be taken. There's also a provision in section 2 of 110 dot 23 that also addresses that the city can deviate in an individual case where the city finds that there exists substantial reason making it more appropriate to deviate. And I guess in doing that, and, you know, we take this process very seriously. We believe that there's been some challenges that the businesses had in operation, and so we recognize and understand that. However, and I'm going to let Scott address a little bit on the licensed side of that, what that means to operate without the appropriate insurance policy being in full force and effect. But as I indicate to you in my materials, is that after reviewing the report from the police chief, taking a look at the ordinance, and in talking with the city attorney, is that in this case, with this being the second violation in a 36-month period of time, we've determined, we reasonably believe, that the owner knowingly, willfully, intentionally, and I think negligently, and in some cases flagrantly, chose to operate the business without the appropriate liquor liability insurance being in effect for not one day, not two days, not a week, but nearly 30 days. So we're at a point that in taking a look at this, I need to take some type of administrative action under the ordinance. However, in doing this, where it involves both a fine and a suspension, the question was, is that what is the council inclined to want to do before I put together that administrative letter to the business, was to have some conversation with you to determine what that should be? I don't have any historical, prior incidents occurring that I can go to and pull off the shelf and say, this is how we've dealt with this in the past. But because it was something that, you know, it wasn't simply a day, it wasn't two days, it wasn't a week, it was 30 days of operation, that that's a fairly flagrant element. And I'll let Scott talk about, in his opinion, what that means to not have liquor liability insurance to the business, to the, to the city, because we are technically the licensing agent, and as we recommend to the state, those businesses that are entitled to receive a liquor license. Had we gotten notice earlier, we would have taken an action earlier, but we didn't receive that till nearly 30 days after that fact. So I'll let Scott talk a little bit about that, because I think part of that, you know, comes to the point, and the issue at hand is just, how do we administratively handle this? And I think minimally, is, as is shown in the ordinance, is that it has to be a $1,000 fine and a two-day suspension. The question is, should it be anything more than that? And so, I'll let Scott talk a little bit about that. At some point, you may want to give the business owners an opportunity to have any comment that they might want to add. But the intent tonight is to try to get direction before we issue that administrative letter and/or then set up an appeal opportunity for them to appear before the council to ultimately, if they so choose to appeal that process, when we go ahead and send out the administrative citation, so.
And I'll jump in here. And I'll jump back a little further into Mike's comments that, the item, you have Minnesota statutes 348, 409 on page two of your materials, which is significant, and I want you to turn to that if you are able to. Because the statute's actually designed to not allow this type of situation to occur. And that's why Mike says it's unique, it's different, we haven't really had to deal with it, because the city should have received 10 days' notice before this policy was actually canceled. And that's, it put us in a real dilemma with Mike calling me and then calling the chief, and the chief, you know, all of us trying to figure out what to do here and how to address this issue. But the city has a secondary issue to, to deal with, with the issuers of this insurance as well. And that's a grave concern, because it was an absolute violation of state statute, not to give the city preemptory notice, 10 days to look at this, to figure it out, to work with the licensee to make sure insurance did get put back in place. That didn't happen, and the end result is, you had an operating entity that was out there for 30 days without insurance. Did that put the city at harm? Yes, it did. Did it put the city at significant harm? That's a judgment question, because we didn't have any knowledge of that. And I think it's very hard to pin that on the city at that point in time. That doesn't mean if somebody was in a situation where there was an alcohol-related injury, or, you know, something along those lines, that the city wouldn't have been brought into a lawsuit as the issuing authority, the claim would be, you should have known that there was no insurance. Well, the reality is, if it's canceled, our ordinance itself says, you're done. You don't get to operate. You can't make alcohol sales. That prevents us from having that problem. That wasn't addressed here. Nobody had that until we received that on the 9th of December, fully a month thereafter. If the city was to knowingly allow an entity to operate, yes, we'd be directly liable. There's no question about that. That's just the way it would be. This case is a little different. I would have, I think, some strong arguments to make that we're not. Doesn't mean we wouldn't be brought in and incur a lot of cost to do that. So it put the city in harm's way. That's the problem. Again, the statute's designed to prevent that and allow the city to have some time to work with a licensee to try to put something back into place, which I know I've done in other communities. I believe we did that a few years ago with one other entity that was having, going through some transitions, but they were fully insured all the way through, unlike this situation. So with that said, what's relevant here, that's up to the council and what you want to decide. This is a unique situation. I've not been involved where there was an entity operating for this long of a time without correct insurance. I'm hoping there's no claims that are made. That could lead to a lot of issues for a lot of people, you know, more so the licensee, but also for the city as well. It obviously incurred a lot of staff time with the chief digging into this, on two occasions, Mike dealing with it, and then obviously making calls to me to also deal with it. Your ordinances are very clear-cut. If you don't have insurance, you can't operate. That's consistent with state law. If you don't have insurance, you cannot operate and make alcohol sales. So I don't, I don't think there's any gray area in that situation. Our ordinance is also very clear on the steps that take on subsequent offenses. It's also clear the council can deviate from that if the council so desires. I'm also aware the council's bend over backwards to work with business entities to try to keep them operating. And certainly, that's the ability of the council to do that in this situation. But this is a significant violation. There's no question it is. It incurred a number, a number of hours of staff time and city attorney time to deal with it, to figure out what was going on. The number of calls that have been made by, you know, Mike, myself, or the chief, even to the insurers to figure out if there's really insurance in place, is well beyond what you do with your normal licensees. It just is. That's the reality. I am aware of, you know, many situations where penalties have been imposed. Your ordinance is not out of line at all with that. Whether or not two days is enough for a suspension, that's up to the council. And I think what Mike is looking for, and what he and I have discussed, it's a significant violation. Certainly, the council can give direction and direct Mike to provide what that may or may not be. You certainly can talk to the licensee regarding that as well. You can certainly direct staff to deal with the licensee on that. There have been situations where it's done voluntarily. You don't go through a whole process. There's a closure for a certain period of time and it's not operating. That's on the table, can be done. But in the end result, you have an ordinance, and it does have a directive in there of some type of penalty, unless you want to deviate.
Chief Garice, do you want to add anything to what was already said?
No, I think it was covered quite well. Ultimately, it is up to you on how you want to proceed. Our ordinance addresses an administrative action against them. So it's a civil, it's not a criminal action. And that's how we've dealt with all of our alcohol violations, out of establishments, our licensed establishments. But unless you have other direct questions, I would have nothing else to add.
Would the owners care to say anything? This is not, as they have already said, we are not here to, at this point in time, give a recommendation. That'll be after a public hearing of some sort. But if you, correct, Mike?
This isn't the formal public hearing process.
Right.
What I'm here trying to do is to determine whether you think
Where we stand.
Under the ordinance, the second violation, which is a $1,000 fine plus a two-day suspension, is sufficient and reasonable, or whether there should be something additional in light of the fact that the business knowingly operated for 30 days without the insurance, that when they first came to town, they're given copies of the insurance or the liquor requirements, and it's their obligation as a liquor license holder to understand what the state statutes are. So this wasn't a case of the fact that they didn't know what they were doing, but we believed it was a willful decision on their part to, due to whatever economic reasons, to operate without the appropriate insurance. So, if you choose to hear any comment from them, that's up to them, whether they want to do that. I just need direction so that when I go to put together the materials to address this issue, do bring it to a public hearing, if that's what they in fact so choose, that I'm able to identify to them what the potential disciplinary action might be.
If either of you two would want to make any statement at this time, please come to the microphone, give your name and position, please.
My name is Jeff Jensen, one of the owners of JT's Hideaway.
I'm Terry Beiley, I'm the other owner.
We don't know how this process was going to work tonight. We just wanted to be here to be able to answer any questions, or basically find out what was going to be put in play. We don't, everything kind of happened real quick.
I just want to say one thing, is that I, I understand the importance of insurance. And I did not, although I let the insurance lapse, there's financial reasons why. Don't have to go into any excuses unless you want to hear them. But I did not willfully, and I wasn't negligent as far as knowing that it was the liquor license, the liquor liability that was included in the insurance. We had just changed insurance companies, and they do the payment process different. They were all taken care of. This one was all done in a lump sum. Our other insurance, we paid, we paid it upfront, so just, I, just, I, no excuse, I had a lot of things going on, and I just let it slip through the cracks. And I thought that it was just the, the general liability on the building that had, that had lapsed. And as soon as we made more money, or whatever, we would get everything put back into place. Obviously, that's true, because Mike called me, when he called the business, I wasn't at work. He called my cellphone, then he called my home phone, I was in the shower. As soon as I got his message, I called and left a message on his voicemail. And I had gotten a return call from somebody else, from the city. I don't know who it was. They were out of town as well. And I immediately got on the phone with my insurance agent, and we had it taken care of in a matter of hours. So it's not like it was something that I would just purposely did. It was something that happened, and I admit, yes, I overlooked it. It was a mistake, and it's, it's just, obviously won't happen again. But I just wanted to say that. I just wanted to make that statement, because it wasn't something that was purposely putting other people in harm's way. I just, it was, I really thought it was just the general liability on the building that was lapsing. So I apologize.
The only thing I'd say in regards to that is that when you take a look at the certificate of liability insurance on page one, is the insurance that's listed there says, policies listed above canceled effective November 9th. I believe Chief Garice, in his research, obtained copies of the notices that were sent out prior to that, dealing with those insurance policies, and that there were the policies and information provided to the owner that covered general liability, as well as, I believe...
And there's one, yes, that says liquor liability in there. I did not open the mail. I'm sorry. That's my, again.
And so the difficulty there, and, you know, I certainly don't relish having to play the role that I have to do in this process. The difficulty is, is that where those insurance policies are combined under one insurance policy and they're making payments, it's up to the owner applicant to understand their particular insurance program. And included in the liability was the general liability for liquor, or, excuse me, for the liquor liability as well. And that's really up to the applicant to understand what they have, what they possess, and what's in place. And that when that license is issued on an annualized basis, and we provided those materials when they first came to town, is that as a liquor license holder, it's your responsibility to know what those requirements are, and to do everything within your power to ensure that you're complying with those requirements. So we don't hold the hands of the business owners in that process, but it's up to them to ensure that they have the appropriate policies in place to address what's needed to have that liquor license.
And during this, this period, from November, we were, our business was only open Thursday through Saturdays. We were not open on Sunday, Monday, or Tuesdays. Was it Wednesday we were, Wednesday through Saturday?
I had, I had to go out and get a full-time job, and I had, I had no reliable staff. So, that's kind of how it all kind of blew up in my face. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
One question. When, when, when will we be notified again of any other next step?
That's part of the discussion with the council tonight, is to understand what interests they have. Then we will formalize that under the liquor ordinance, where I have to... Then we will formalize that under the liquor ordinance where I have to, or I will notify you that with this being the second violation, here's what we intend to take as an action, either some type of fine and/or suspension. You can choose to pay the fine and to take the suspension as is proposed. If you disagree and would like to appeal that proposed disciplinary action to the council, then we would attempt to schedule a public hearing in the future. And as part of that process, we would identify when that action would occur and how we would have to handle that.
Okay.
But I don't know that sitting here tonight, just exactly when that would be. But at a minimum, in the city's ordinance, dealing with the violation that, that we have with it being a second one where there's a $1,000 fine and a two-day suspension, is that it does require that all multiple day license suspensions shall run consecutively starting on the first Friday. That it would be effectively a minimum of a Friday, a Saturday that would come into play unless the council determined that that length of time should be expanded.
Okay. And that's, that would be determined by your letter and then?
Correct.
Okay.
So what I'm here tonight seeking from the council is direction that in their opinion, and, you know, I, you know, I might be too strong in the language that I use in my memo, but, you know, from a business standpoint, that, you know, to be able to possess a liquor license that's issued by the state of Minnesota and the city is no, a person has to knowingly know what the requirements are to possess that license and to do what's necessary. Even though they maybe only operated Wednesday through Saturday, that was too many days with the fact that there was no insurance to have been able to, one day is too many. So the, the difficulty there is that, you know, for the period of time that that did go on and that there was no notice by the owners of the business to us that they didn't have the insurance. We didn't receive it from the insurance company, so we were in the dark the whole entire timeframe. And Scott indicated that part of what we also want to do with this is to take a look at how or why the insurance agency or company, why we didn't receive the notice that we felt we should have under the state law as well.
Is there something that we, we need to do with our insurance to make sure that that happens? I don't, I don't, I would think something like that would be automatic.
Yeah, it is really supposed to be. So that, that's what I'm saying. We're in a unique situation. I have not encountered that before. The legislature added that in to protect, you know, basically both entities, the licensee and the city, to make sure something was continuous and in place. Why that didn't happen, I don't know. I know Jim got some different, you know, pointing fingers. This one should have done that. That one should have done that. It, it's going to require some follow-up from Mike and Jim to the companies to see what's going on, but it should not have happened. That is true.
The piece of the puzzle we don't have, but what it says in regards to the cancellation on your certificate of liability insurance is it does say that should any of the above described policies be canceled before the expiration date thereof, notice will be delivered in accordance with the policy provisions. So I don't know what's in his insurance policy that might spell that out additionally.
Well, but it's exactly what's in the statute. It's 60 days for any provision and it's 10 days for non-payment. That's what the state law requires, so that's what the policy has to have. So I, that's what I'm saying. It should have happened. It just didn't.
Thank you.
Unless you have questions, I...
Comments from the council? Anybody want to start?
Well, my question is on the fine. Is that thousand, okay, so according to, I'll back up. So according to our ordinance, our code, we have to have substantial reason to deviate. So the $1,000 substantial reason, is that going to cover attorney's cost and staff time? I would, I guess to me, that would be one reason to deviate is if our, I don't think the general taxpayer should have to pay for the correction of this issue.
I can't answer it this evening just exactly without sitting down with Scott and Jim to try to ascertain or determine where we're at with what we have invested to date. I can't tell you what that is.
That would be part of my consideration is I don't think the general public should have to pay for, pay for that.
The next option would be to, to hold a public hearing and get public input or other business?
No, no, no. No, the intent isn't necessarily to get public input. It's the opportunity is part of the administrative process that to issue the $1,000 fine and two-day suspension, they have the choice that they can go ahead and accept that when I send them the letter and the issue is effectively taken care of, that we determine what the dates are and they pay their fine, end of story. If they disagreed with what that is or whatever additional you think is appropriate, they have the opportunity under the Administrative Procedures Act to come and appear before you and to state their case and their opinion before we would formally, finally adopt this is what we're going to do in the disciplinary action with this matter, if they disagreed with it. So it's not necessarily to elicit public input in the process. It's a, it's a hearing before you under the Administrative Procedure Act.
Well, I guess I'd have to side with Amy and just, I'd like to get some of those figures. If you guys can tally that up best you can and try to determine. I think Amy made a good point with, it's not fair for the taxpayer to incur any of those costs through staff time and attorney fees. But in the same sense, I don't want to have a boarded up building on Main Street either because we're driving somebody out of business. That's not who I am or who this city is. I think we should value our businesses as much as we can. Was it a serious offense? Yeah. Should there be some type of penalty? Yes. But I'd like to see what those costs are first and...
Well, the question is, it should be more than what's listed here as the second violation. That's really the question.
But we can't deviate from that at all?
No. The council, a council, previous councils have set up this administrative process that this is what is to be done.
Oh.
To deviate, you can expand from this.
I see.
But you can't lessen it.
Oh, okay. All right.
I, I, I think the council can go both ways if you, if you wanted to. But it's typically Mike's correct. It would be a deviation and upward deviation for a second violation like that. But, you know, that's up to the council. It really is. And really what you're doing is you're setting direction for Mike to provide the notice of what it is. And again, either accept or they are entitled, under the ordinance and under state law, to the ability to have a public hearing to say, no, we don't agree with that. We think the council should do something else. And that's fine. Either they avail themselves of that or the penalty goes into play.
Janet, do you have thoughts?
What was the first violation? Same thing?
No, this is the second violation.
No, this is a second violation within a 36-month period of time.
It was a different thing.
Well, was it a different violation? Was it the same insurance?
No, no.
And so instead of prosecuting criminally, the council set up an administrative code on how to handle this. Instead of filing, it's a violation of state law and sending it to criminal court, they chose to deal with it administratively. First offense, $500 fine, second, third, or fourth. This is the process that we are going to use. So council always has the ability. You could change that down the road, but this is what has been enacted by councils to deal with liquor violations in the city.
But they paid a $500 fine on that first violation?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and as Jim pointed out, it's correct. This is civil. This is not criminal. Could you do something criminal? Sure, you could. If somebody was knowingly violating this ordinance and continuing to make sales, you could do that. That's not what staff is here telling you to do in any way, shape, or form. It's to follow the procedure of having your liquor code, which is exactly what we've been talking about. It's a civil issue you're dealing with.
Jeff, you had a point?
Question. What was the date of the, the first offense again?
First offense was December 21 of 2012.
Thirty-five months?
It occurs within a 36-month period of time. I don't get the luxury of determining that that's anything other than what's provided under the administrative part of the code because that's what's been adopted by the council.
I take a little bit more stronger opinion than I think I've heard so far. Whether this was willful or not, I do agree with Mike that being a business person, especially in the liquor license area or liquor area, that you have to have a little bit more savvy, if you will, as to exactly what your responsibilities are. I know that as a practitioner, the day I don't have malpractice insurance, I'm done. No questions asked. I'm done. And I look upon that much the same as I would if I were a liquor store person. Why the insurance companies didn't give us 10 days notice? That is, Scott has says, we have to figure out in the Department of Commerce maybe after the insurance company for that. But that's a separate action from what we have. I believe that we should have been notified. Had we been notified, you would have been shut down for however long. Had it gone on the way it has now, you probably still wouldn't have your license. So I believe that there should be, and I feel very strongly that there needs to be more than what the ordinance says, $1,000 and two days. I don't know what the fee should be, but I think the closure of your business should occur for more than two days. I would put it at 32 days minimum. That's my opinion. I know things can happen and I know it happens outside of our sometimes desires, but it happens. And Scott explained the seriousness that the city could have been put in, may still be put in if something happens on a claims made basis, therefore something later on comes up where you're at fault, insurance company finds out, you aren't insured for that month and it happened during that month, we can be responsible. So I take this as a very serious situation. And I'm afraid if we don't come down hard on you, we have set a precedent and that's not good for the city. So that's my opinion, Mike. I don't know how we're going to resolve this, but exactly where we should go. But I feel very strongly about that. Am I out of line?
No, I know it's very serious that any business owner should be concerned about their insurance. That's, that and your property taxes, the liquor license is something that you cannot ignore because everything can be taken away. So yes, I agree. It is serious. I think the 32 days does point that it's serious. But I also, like Sean said, to keep a business going, hopefully this would be the last chance. Longer suspension would be okay, but I'm more concerned with the fine to the taxpayers too.
Well, that, I think I included that, that it could be higher depending upon what Mike finds out. And I don't like closing a business on Main Street any more than Sean does. I really don't. But this falls outside of the purview of most business owners downtown. Liquor establishment, that carries more serious consequences. Mike?
Scott and I have tried to talk at great lengths and I know this is very difficult to sit up here and to try to pull something out of the sky that, again, it isn't our intent to lose a business. But how do we find some middle ground in this process? That, number one, we probably wouldn't be in this position if cash flow and economics were not an issue. So as we take a look at relative to the fact that there's a fine and/or some suspension, any suspension and that typically under the ordinance requires that that be a Saturday, a Friday, Saturday to begin with, that economically is also going to be an impairment on top of whatever that fine is. If you look at the third one, that that's a $2,000 and a 10-day suspension, that if you were to ask, and you haven't, but if you want me to offer something, I, I guess I would, trying to find some middle ground in that process based on kind of what we're listening to, trying to keep the business viable if possible. There is some economic loss with a fine and/or the suspension. You know, I don't know that Scott and I have anything black and white that we can pull off the shelf. But if you kept the $1,000 fine, assuming that we don't find that there's anything significantly above and beyond that to drive the dollar amount a little bit higher, but that maybe something in that range of between the two-day and the 10-day, substantially less than David, what I think you were describing and trying to talk a little bit about here. But the thinking is that in, in, in something in that range of maybe between the two and the 10-day is if we do much more than that, that combination of fine and/or suspension is probably a tipping point that's going to make it of such a magnitude that the business may not be able to exist going forward. And then in fact, we don't have the business is, is the other outcome. Am I correct? I've garnered that we, we've had some knowledge that economically, that there are challenges in the liquor industry. And so again, I don't disbelieve anything that Terry has indicated. The difficulty is, is that, you know, it is severe when you take a look at the fact that it occurred for a month. I don't know that, without trying to ascertain the amount of time that Scott has in it from a legal standpoint, that I think I can gauge the amount of time I have in it and I think Jim can probably give me his indication of what that is. And if that comes close to being in that $1,000 or maybe even slightly, a little bit more than that, that fine-wise, that maybe is sufficient. The suspension side of it, that that two days taken out of Friday and Saturday, that if they're only open Wednesday through Sunday, did you say? That if we were to do something along the lines of 30 days or 32 days, like you were maybe just tentatively laying out there, I think this issue would be over and we probably aren't going to have a business in operation. So, you know, trying to back off something that I think acknowledges the fact that, that they should have maybe used different decision-making in the process. And again, I can't speak for them, is that maybe something in that range of between the two and the 10-day along with that $1,000 fine, unless we find it was substantially more, might be something that might be appropriate in this fashion without going to the end of the extreme and going to the 32, 30, 32-day side of it.
Yeah, I'm willing to do something that's more reasonable.
That's the only rationale that I can attempt to try to use in the process. And again, we don't have it where I can pull something off the shelf and say, this is what we've done in the past. That even in Scott's work in all these other different cities, we weren't able to come up with something as, well, what should we recommend to you in this case? There isn't anything. So we're, we're designing on the fly, but recognizing is that, you know, there, there's a penalty aspect of this. But if we go so severe, the business isn't going to exist and won't, you know, we won't have gained anything in that process either.
And my only suggestion to Mike was that, and it bared on the seriousness of the violation that I was aware of an administrative case that went to a hearing that there was a gap in violation of the same day on insurance for sales and the two days of suspension were imposed in that situation in that city. So it obviously is looked upon as a very serious violation. And that's why I can see why Dave, why you get to that point and where you come from. It is. I mean, there's no question about it. I, I think Mike's rationale is correct. We, we've talked about it a little bit. That it's got to be significant, but there, there's no idea or desire to close down a business. But, but it is a serious violation. There's no question about that. That's the problem here.
Well, may I propose something different then? If it starts on a Friday, as it would, a six-day violation would put it from Friday through the following Wednesday. They would, the way they operate in effect would be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They would, the way they operate in effect would be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, unless they choose to open up Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. For them, it would be three days. It falls between the second and third violation. Does that sound amenable to the rest of the council? And you two?
Yeah, I, for me, it is, and that's what Mike and I have talked about, it was something in that middle and ground there, and I do understand your, your point of, of cost coverage, I, that Mike determined that.
I still believe I would follow Amy's suggestion that you have to determine what the cost to the city was, and that becomes then the fine.
So, in that, are you saying that if, you're saying if there's anything additional that would have exceeded the $1,000, that that be tacked on to that $1,000? If it's able to stay within the scope of the $1,000, that we keep it at the $1,000?
Correct.
Is that, am I?
Not including what's going to happen with the insurance company, the conversations.
That's a separate item.
When would the fine or the suspension go into?
Well, what I would have to do is that I've got to sit down and take a look at that we garner this information and then try to determine that, how soon can I process the materials and set up the process so that they have a reasonable period of time to take a look at it, evaluating the disciplinary action that's being proposed, but that if they want a hearing, they have to request the hearing of me that I have to schedule with the council. And so, in all likelihood, it wouldn't occur out into sometime in, in January, because our next meeting is January 5 or 6, Ken? Trying to think.
Fifth.
Fifth, and whether with the holidays coming up, whether that would end up being at the first or the second meeting in January would be dependent upon whether they would want to request that in front of the council to address the proposed disciplinary action that would be coming forward. I have to be able to send notice, give them sufficient time to respond and or get that scheduled, that the council would hold that hearing, listen to any testimony they might have, anything else that we might have to supplement that, and then you would render your determination, and so it wouldn't go into effect till after that.
So, if they chose not to appeal it or have their public hearing?
Yeah, we would identify, we would identify going into that when the dates of that would be, but it wouldn't be any earlier than before the time that the council would hold the administrative hearing.
If there's a hearing itself?
Yes.
If there wasn't a hearing and they chose to pay it and, and take their suspension, can they say, I'm going to take our suspension on?
We would take a look at the dates and.
We have to start on a Friday.
And would they need to have their fine paid before, or the suspension?
Because they have 30 days.
30 days they have to pay it.
There's 30 days in the ordinance, yep.
Yes, I'm fine with that, yeah.
So, we're looking at up to six days, the fine of the $1,000, unless we find that we've incurred additional costs beyond that, that we would add that to that and put that into place on the dates that would be potentially workable, subject to whether they would request a hearing or not.
You have to put that as six calendar days, not six days that they're open?
Yeah, it'd be six, six, it would be six consecutive calendar days.
I intend with six calendar days, consecutive.
And so, that's essentially the direction we're looking for. I don't need you to, you don't need them to take any additional action other than giving us that direction, so we'll go ahead and follow the scope of the ordinance and put together the appropriate materials and correspondence to the liquor license holders.
And the idea is, obviously, you are deviating from second violation with the two days and $1,000, but you've expressed that, so I think Mike has a consensus of what the council is to put that as the findings for this matter. If there was a, a hearing request by the licensee, then you would address that again at that point in time, but you don't need anything further at this point.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of mayoral appointments for boards, commissions for January 5. This is not something that we have to do tonight, with the intention of is that the five of us will get back to the mayor with our wishes for appointments for the 2016 years, year. And so, look this over if you want anything changed, if you prefer something else, let Chuck know. And sooner than later.
Didn't we just redo this or?
We did.
In August when Jenna came on?
Well, what you did is you filled the vacant slots from the change in the elected officials. Typically, the mayor would deal with this in January at the start of the business year. Nothing necessarily has to change, but it's a conveyance that that's the time of the year that he would normally consider that and make those recommendations to the council. So, if everybody has the same interest that they want to stay put, and he doesn't want to make any changes that you would take an action on, then nothing would change. If there was enough interest in wanting to make movement, then he'd get to consider that and recommend that to you at the first meeting in January.
Consent agenda. Don't have any issues there. There was one correction I already gave to Mike that was in one of the meeting minutes. Other than that, I have nothing, but.
Which meeting minute was that?
It was the one for.
Prague Area Community Center, it should be association versus assertion.
On page, 713 in the minutes. Right about in the middle of the page, it says new Prague Area Community Center assertion, it should be association.
Oh, okay. Just a typo.
Is it? Yeah. That was the only thing I could find.
That's the only thing that you had there, but just need to, as you take a look at inclusion, is the 2016 tobacco licenses, on the one for Walgreens, I need to ask you to place a condition that they address a delinquency of a bill that they have with the utilities, and so as you approve the licenses, at least with that one, approve the contingency that, that that delinquent seem to be taken care of before the first of the year, the license not be issued until they resolve that issue.
So, we need to pull it and then?
No, no, just, if you would add that element to that in the approval of the consent agenda, or just pull the tobacco licenses off and then we can take a separate action on that. You can do the consent for everything else.
Yeah.
Is that the same for all businesses, that they've all been checked?
That's a, yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, but pull the tobacco license to discuss individually.
A second.
Motion made by Sean, second by Jenna, to approve all of the consent agenda, save the tobacco licenses, and we will discuss that separately. May I do it tonight?
Yeah, I think we just have to add the.
Well, you can vote on what you just approved.
Right.
With pulling the tobacco and we'll come back to the tobacco.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Consent agenda is approved, save the tobacco licenses.
So, now the tobacco licenses, what we'd recommend is we'd recommend approval, subject to the condition being placed on the Walgreens license.
I'll make the motion, Mike just said. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, passes 4-0. Miscellaneous. Bruce? Nothing? Jim? Nothing? Ken? Mike?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Scott?
Nothing.
Mary Jo? Pat?
I just want to say to the budget preparation, I came in at the last end, so thanks for all the background information and taking a little extra time, and sorry, co-council members for putting up with a newbie, but I appreciate the insight on it, so thanks for all your work. And I drove by the ball field today, it's looking good, it's kind of exciting to see some of the stadiums, the bleachers look good, so that's it.
Me?
No, I do not have anything.
Sean?
I do not.
Only one I have is a question for Jim. Anything on the English Avenue yet? Where, because I had somebody ask me about that today.
No, I responded to an email last week that we had gotten a week earlier, but no, I did not talk to Mr. Price yet.
Okay.
I will do that, but.
Actually, we're taking the traffic counter, will be down tomorrow, so I'll have a full week of data, plus two weekends actually, so I'll pull that tomorrow and see what we get.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything missed? I'd like to thank everybody for putting up with me. I made a lot more mistakes than I should have, and Sean asked if I was a little nervous. I guess I might have been, I didn't think I was, but, so, thanks for putting up with my ineptitude.
We'll just have to rotate that around so everybody gets that same experience.
I think you should do that, Mike. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we're adjourned.